I told Jason he has three minutes and he's taking over.
That's right. Get this road, show the road.
Yeah.
I said, "The meeting starts when the mayor says it starts." Besides, the lock away date is longer than your service. And I'm okay with that.
I'm, I'm, I still think I need to go first.
That's what he said, he wants to go first if I can.
Oh, no. You're going out.
More punishment.
I'll tell you what, everybody sit tight, I'm gonna go find it. It's worth a shot.
Maybe, maybe I'll go find it.
Hey, I'm looking at, I'm looking at that, I mean, we had to write that four-page-long deal.
Oh, no, it's good.
Do you think you could call us, you're gonna make it though?
Fred, he's got a corner outside.
Yeah, yeah, that could be.
Can you go call him? Okay, okay.
What do you think?
You?
No, me?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Oh, you're talking about, y'all return here?
No, no.
No, obviously our pastor can't in my car. Oh, so you got a gig there? First of all, I was just, I don't know. You never know.
They're just saying, "We don't want to be without."
So if somebody knows, you know?
No.
Don't let the church know, I mean, can you hear something? How? Yeah, no, I, I agree. I know some of these positions, those guys who do, do the other churches, they were too traditional to me. Retired from, which kept me. You know, we're tired of going in. What? You know, state, I'm, I'm suffering with that. They, they give me a really nice incentive for, if I would give them the process. I get some, because it is, it's a little must find, it's already been, and they actually last three months, the new agent likes you working out. But I think that's why, I think it's a good proposal.
Well, I just really, with, with you, the way they did transition.
Yeah.
Simple, say, Mr. B.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, you're close.
Yeah, that is awesome. We decided to give it a go. Well, Ronnie made time a year ago, she would love to see the float.
They'll be full.
And so.
Make sure you post pictures of that.
Yeah. And so, yeah, I get some really good seats, and some at the beginning of the parade. Let's take it straight from there to the ball. Me too, yeah. Me too.
You're gonna go to the championship to win?
You know, if I can get tickets, it's gonna be nice and nice.
I know a lot of people are already ready.
Yeah.
You gotta be on the list, you gotta get on the list to win.
Well, yeah, I'm going left side, if you like. So, we're two tickets each.
Right.
So you got an extra, two tickets, a hundred thousand dollars plus.
Blue flowers.
Yeah, I don't know.
He was telling me that he's, he's got a whole ready to go.
Yeah.
He didn't, I was watching before he did it, and so it's, whoa. So I think that's.
We're gonna have to anyway, I mean, he had to take.
He's next to the game. So if I can get tickets, I really, I really, I'm just getting. Yeah, he's kicking the ground up and down.
Make sure you, you. You? Yeah.
I see who our first pick was, but he's, I think he's pretty much turned it down to six. Since, yeah, I remember when he was on, yeah. I mean, he got, he and Jill got married, two to three, yeah. He's a great, oh, this is, anyway, he, he's called Jason Friday, I said, yeah. He's always called me, like, step down.
I don't care.
Yeah, two new, right, Dan Wobb.
Is he here?
And he was like, yeah. Both of them are on the planning condition, he ran the race, Jason Richardson. Yeah, I think, that's more, maybe he'd be.
You're so lucky.
Yeah, now, he's one of them. That's two weeks in.
Mayor, I can tell you how good it is.
I, I was trying to convince him to do it. He should, I was working, you know. He said, "He's coming, he's coming."
I think you'll have faith.
I told him I had every sleep, and now, and everybody goes, "You know where?" I just go, "What's going on over there?"
I know. What, can you be different?
Yeah. Yeah, that was interesting. You say it's number four?
Number four. Showtime.
You know, I think, I think this is gonna be one of the, one of the.
Yeah. Russell.
So, yeah, I'll miss it, but I've been to Cross, you know, like this. And it hasn't bothered you. It's, it really.
Just got one more question for you. Yeah, I know. Okay.
Where's your place at?
Would you call the row, please?
Yes. Danielle McKinney. Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December 4th, 2017. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular park report meeting held November 9th, 2017. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018, in the amount of $2,414,917.80.
Will you approve?
Second. Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second for the consent docket, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three, consider adoption of resolution number 89217 pertaining to the general obligation bonds of 2018, approved by a majority of qualified voters at an election held on November the 4th, 2014, fixing the amount of bonds to mature each year. Fixing the time and place of the bonds are to be sold, and authorizing the clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law.
Mayor and council, this is the last in the series of the 2014 bonds approved by the voters for the 34th Street overpass. Chris Gander from Be OK Financial is here to give more details, and Terry Hawkins, our bond counsel.
Hello. Mr. Brooks said, Chris Gander, Lakeview Financial Securities. You guys have done this multiple times, we come in, this resolution sets the date, time, and place for the bonds. That dates February 5th, 2 o'clock. Place is electronic, they can fax or hand deliver. It's been years and years since we've had either of the latter two. Everybody makes it electronically. Also, once again, this is the last authorization, or the last issue of the 2014 election, which was for 15 million. This is the last 4 million-plus from that issue, and then you've also completed all of your bonds from the 2012 park election. So at this point, after this bond issue, you will have gone through all of your authorizations to the list, general obligation. Before Mayor Lewis can ask the question, I'll answer, this will not increase taxes. This is a planned issuance to keep the tax levy where it's been, and actually, it's a little bit below the projections that were originally given when you went out to the voters and asked for these authorizations.
Good, great.
So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and if not, we will see you on February 5th.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four, thank you very much. Item number four is consider appointing.
We want to table.
Oh, I'm sorry, item number four, we're, we're gonna ask to table this for right now. Do we have a table and motion? I'll make a motion, that we table. All right, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote on the table and motion, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item is tabled. Item number five is consider approval of ordinance number 87617, amending Part 14, Chapter 3, by adding Article B, design and construction of the wireless facilities, establishing regulations of wireless facilities within the city right-of-way, establishing permitting and network node installation requirements, prohibiting wireless facility interference with municipal communications infrastructure, and establishing relocation and removal procedures. Elizabeth?
Mayor and council, in the last six months to a year, city staff has been fielding multiple inquiries by cell service providers to locate cell towers, or antennas, or underground fiber optic in the city right-of-way. The desire to, to start installing these new infrastructure within the city right-of-way is to increase the cellphone capacity and data capacity at certain high-traffic locations. So, for example, if you're along 19th Street, when it's particularly busy, it may be difficult for you to download data to your smartphone. And the, the cellphone providers are wanting to install different applications to help solve this problem. One is a, a small antenna, wireless antenna, that's placed on existing poles within the right-of-way. The other application is a to, a tall, skinny monopole that would be located in the city right-of-way. And both of these applications really work as a, as a repeater to increase the, the data capacity. So, in reviewing these requests, city staff is very careful about the use of the right-of-way. We are always reminded that we have a finite space that we're working with. On Ontario roadways, it's generally 100-foot wide, for residential streets, it's about 50 feet wide. And there's a lot of utilities that go in that space, and we have to make sure we have room for the roadway, the sidewalk. So, the, right-of-way can get very congested. So, whenever we talk about installing new poles and underground fiber, really, we feel like more research is needed in that, to determine if it's appropriate in all locations, and what happens whenever we feel that the right-of-way is reaching its capacity of users in it. However, the other application that, as we were asked to be, to consider, would be installing the smaller antennas on existing poles within the right-of-way. Since these are looking at just co-locating these facilities on existing poles, that's what this ordinance addresses only. So, no new poles in the city right-of-way at the moment. We are looking at allowing providers to co-locate on existing poles, whether they are city-owned or otherwise. Those several requirements must be met, they must have, their color must be blended in with the environment. They're not allowed on decorative poles, and they cannot interfere with the city's traffic signals or radio systems that we already have in place. And creating a setback requirement from each other, so we don't have a lot of these facilities creating a lot of interference in the right-of-way. So, we're proposing a 1,000-foot separation distance. The ordinance also establishes a permitting requirement, where they would apply for a permit, and we would review their request and approve it. Also, it does require the provider to keep an inventory of their infrastructure, so, at which case, we need to have them relocate it for a roadway widening, or whatever the case may be, that they would have those, those records in place. And it also establishes relocation process, and ensures that the provider pays for that relocation, whenever we do have to move it for whatever reason. So that is a summary of the ordinance in front of you today. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Elizabeth, do other cities have similar ordinances in place?
This is a brand-new issue, or, or subject, that's being floated out amongst the municipalities. I've had the chance to speak with Oklahoma City, Norman, Edmund, Midwest City. Nobody has an ordinance in place, they deal with them at a, on a one-by-one basis. So, they might approve a special agreement for one provider, and then another one would come in, kind of a piecemeal. Now, Broken Arrow does have an ordinance, and so we modeled our ordinance on Broken Arrow. And there's also, a lot of the, the communities in Texas already have ordinances. So, we feel pretty confident that our ordinance, the way it's written, fully can regulate the application of placing the small antenna, or small cell tower, on an existing pole. We feel pretty comfortable with that. For other utilities that want to actually, uh, construct a, a monopole, or go underground, that's where we still need to do some research. And especially on our width of our right-of-way, and what we can expect in the future, of who's gonna be using it.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, if there's no other discussion?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of an exclusive negotiating agreement with Belmont Development Company, LLC, for the redevelopment of Southwest 17th Street and Janeway site.
Mayor and council, I'm just gonna take you through a timeline, kind of, to get where we've gotten to today. To begin this, we had our disaster in May 2013. We, in March of 2014, received the $52.2 million in community development, block grant, disaster recovery funding. Through that time period, we knew we had to do a housing project, and it presented ourselves to purchase the rural mobile home site. And that occurred July 2015. In September of 2015, we engaged in the master redevelopment plan of the site, because we wanted to do something special, and that was directed from, from the council. September 2016, we adopted the plan unit development by the planning commission, and you heard of it, and adopted it in October of 16. And from that point, we've done a lot of site development work, if you've been to the site, you've seen we've moved the dirt, we have just let a utility section, or procurement out, and then we've also tried to procure a master developer. So that's what brings us here tonight. Through the master planning process, it was engaging in the public meetings, engaging you all, and planning commission, and really had three main elements. The newer urbanism concepts for the site, a mixed income development, which is tied to the housing and urban development funding source, and we wanted a mixed use, something that, that doesn't really present itself anymore. So those were the conceptual designs that came out from the master plans, you recall. Since then, we went through procurement for a master developer. We've did seven outlets, through the RFQ and RFP process. In October 2017, we received five responses. Internally, we reviewed that with our attorney. Four of them made it past the request for qualifications, and then we went through the full procurement of the four. It was comprised, the committee was comprised of 11 members, consisting of citizens, city council member, private sector, and public sector. With that, the evaluation committee came up with the scores. Belmont was the number-one choice, SCG, Liberty and Michaels came in the scoring, as you can see. Through the committee discussion and through the scoring, their Belmont group was the successful group, and so that's what brings us here tonight. The statute recommendation is to proceed with Belmont, they have teamed up with Rise Residential Construction and BGO Architects. And just to kind of go through and let you know, these are developments that these developers, or organizations, or companies have done. These all are low-income or mixed-income developments that they've designed and developed, and that has some similar concepts that we requested. Going through the, the procurement process, we, the Belmont Development Group proposed a total unit count of 280, with 80% of those being affordable, which brings the count to 224. The others will be market rate. They proposed a retail space of approximately 12,000 square feet. It's a requirement that will have storm shelters included throughout the development. There's community space of approximately 9,000 square feet. And the overall development costs, looking through it, is gonna be approximately $49 million, with approximately $13 million of community development, disaster recovery funds that we've used. So that brings us kind of where we're here tonight. I'd like to introduce Corey Farmer, he's with Belmont Development, and just to let him tell you a little bit about who they are.
Thank you, Jared. Mayor Lewis, council members, my name is Corey Farmer, I'm here on behalf of Belmont Development Company. Additionally, in the audience with me here tonight are two of the principal owners of Belmont Development, Mr. Derek Hamilton and Ryan Hudson. I'm not gonna go into a whole lot of detail about our company, or who we are, we, we kind of went through everything with the selection committee. We are an affordable housing developer, that's all we do. We're here local in Oklahoma, our office is just in downtown Oklahoma City. Principal members of the company have been working in affordable housing for about 15 years now. Belmont as a company itself was founded in 2007. Since our founding in 2007, we've been the most successful affordable housing developer within the state of Oklahoma. We also work in a kind of a regional, seven-state region here around, kind of Midwest Oklahoma area as well. I'm just, the main reason, kind of, we're here today before you guys, is to let you know how committed we are to this development, how excited and humble we are to have been proposed by the selection committee, to work with the city, to take all of the, the hard work and, and time that you guys have already put into this process over the years, and the different committee meetings, and, and design reviews, and to take the master plan and plan unit development that the city's already put into effect. And our, our job, that we see it, is to work with the city, to then use our knowledge and expertise to actually help create this and make it a reality, so it's not just a vision or a plan. We're excited to work hand-in-hand with the city, each step of the way, so that we can, what, what ends up being on the ground, right across the street, at the redevelopment area, follows as closely as possible to the master plan and conceptual work that's already been done by the city. And we're truly excited for the opportunity, and we're eager to hit the ground, full speed ahead, and get moving forward on this development.
Thank you.
Mayor, with that being said, staff is recommending authorization to authorize city staff to engage in negotiations with Belmont, to proceed with this development. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Quick question, do we, we have a, a, any, I know we've seen pictures of what it might look like, what we want it to look like. Or concrete, do we have the, the plan, the design, all that, as you've already explained to me?
So, so not yet, we didn't require that in the procurement package, but if this is approved tonight, depending on what council decides, then they have 30 days to submit renderings to us to review, and then that review process starts occurring at that point. And it truly is a negotiation, they'll propose something, and it'll go through the review committee on our end, and then we'll negotiate back and forth what it actually will look like. But it'll be 30 days out if it's approved today, and we'll see what the site may look like.
And that, and that's typical when you go through a selection process, because it's not fair to ask the architect or developers to do work for free before they actually get the job, so, that's, that's common practice.
A lot of opportunity to see what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, you have an opportunity to see it, or go through actual review committee, and it'll go before council for approval, before it's actually allowed to be built.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody wanna make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second?
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven is consider approval of an agreement with the Center for Economic Development Law, CECL, in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for legal consulting services for the Southwest 17th Street and Janeway redevelopment project, capital planning and resiliency from HUD.
Mayor and council, this is a contractual agreement between the Center for Economic Development Law. As you know, we have a history with Economic Development Law, with Cleveland Heights. This agreement covers a do-not-exceed-for-developing-exclusive-negotiating-agreement, and the disposition and development agreement for the redevelopment site that we just saw. This is not, will not be a grant-funded activity, it's, will be out of capital planning and resiliency, professional service line item within the general fund budget, due to some OIG issues with HUD. Jeff Sabans here with Center of Economic Development Law, if you have any questions, we're here, happy to, happy to answer them.
Okay. Make a motion to approve? All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this amount, or anything? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham. Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Next item is consider approval of the city's financial audit for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017.
D and B, Mayor and council, we're asking your approval of the city of ours financial audit for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, and we have Bob Dillon here, of Dillon and Associates, to help answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Make a motion to approve? Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, if there's no other discussion, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of budget supplement for, excuse me, fiscal year 2017, 2018, for donations received and expenses incurred with the Christmas spectacular event in the amount of $13,500.
Mayor and council, we received some donations for the Christmas spectacular event that was held on December 9th, and associated the expenses that went along with that, and we're requesting a budget supplement so that we can put those on the books, and those funds will go towards that project.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you. Second. Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Okay, we have an addendum to the agenda for the regular meeting. This is item nine-one. Is consider approval of supplement number four to the engineering services agreement with EST Incorporated for the I-35 Southwest Thirty-Fourth Street Bridge Project in the amount of eighty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Mayor and council, the amendment for this contract has to do with the lighting element of the bridge, and so this was the money that was needed for, to retain engineering and the lighting consultants. Appreciate approval.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? No? Would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number ten is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December fourth, 2017. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. It's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eleven is consider approval of a health benefit consulting agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated for one year with automatic renewal option with a thirty-day notice to terminate. This is from risk management.
Mayor and trustees, good evening. Gallagher Benefit Services has been our health benefits consultant since 2014. During the planned renewal periods, Gallagher assists with budget projections and provides renewal alternatives, including cost impact for the city and our employees. They actively participate in our health benefit committee meetings, provide evaluating, I'm sorry, providing evaluation of best practices to help limit plan liability, increase participant satisfaction, and streamline administrative procedures. Gallagher staff prepares our open enrollment documents and conducts our road shows to discuss upcoming changes to our health and pharmacy benefit plans with our employees. In addition, they provide legislative and regulatory updates to HR and risk management staff. Projects coming up for 2018 include preparing an RFP and evaluating proposals to select a pharmacy benefit program, and looking into a near-site clinic option to benefit employees with minimal cost to the city. Gallagher has offered to continue our agreement for one year at the current price with an automatic annual renewal option and a thirty-day notice to terminate. Staff does recommend approval of this agreement. In addition, Daniel Summers from Gallagher is here to answer any questions you may have.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? I guess I have a question. If it's automatic renewal, why do we vote on it every year?
The last one was two years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number twelve is a consent docket. Item A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December fourth, 2017. Item B, approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, eighty cents for CBR claim number two zero five zero 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 five six five to Andrew Braun and the authorized placement on the Edful Room tax row. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, seventy-two cents.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. It's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Terry, I've left that chair.
Item fourteen is road cops. Call road, please.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham? Terry Kavner?
Here.
Item fourteen is the consent docket. Item H, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held November twentieth, 2017.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes, item passes. So this time, we will recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item number fifteen, let the record reflect that all the members that were present are still present. Item A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. And it appears there are several people signed up to speak. Tim Wilson?
Thank you for your time. My name's Tim Wilson. Currently live at thirty-three-hundred Sider Lane since January 2013. What I'd like to discuss is, we recently received a letter from the city's attorney saying that we're going to condemn a section of our land for road usage on Sider Lane, which is a private road. Just to give you a brief history about this road, if some of you may know, some of you may not. We purchased Seven Acre Track in 2009. It had one access road being Sider Lane. According to the one Sider Lane roadway easement on file, it extends from Sunny Lane to just a few feet east of our property line, servicing no more than four tracks of land. In 2012, we began building our dream home and fence. We positioned the home based on low traffic of Sider Lane private road. This road is also an oil lease road. It is leased to Grand Resources Oil Company. As you can see in the picture there, there's multiple oil rigs around that location. Move forward just a little bit. In April of 2014, we received notice of a rezoning of a seven-acre track, just two tracks east of our home, owned by Kent Davidson at the time, with a sign at the end of our road and a letter in the mail stating Sider Lane would be the access. So we attended the planning meeting, and it was discussed and determined that Sider Lane would not be the access for that track. In April of 2015, two lots within that track were sold, with the Falls addition, Windmill Road as access, and addresses. Within a week or so, we were served, we, we received a letter from an attorney to take down our fence, in their words, meaning a gate that had been installed, our west property line. The gate was actually put there by Grand Resources, the oil company, due to a grass fire that was started by the oil rigs around that same timeframe, preventing people from gaining access to or near the rigs. Just to kind of confirm, a little bit of information about the Grand Resources Oil Company, they have a blanket easement over the entire area there. To re, to reply to that letter we received, we had to hire an attorney to respond to the letter confirming that the new lot owner did not have access on Sider Lane. For a time, there were no issues, two lots, two homes built on them using Sooner Drive and Windmill Road to build the homes, large equipment, that kind of thing. About middle to the end of 2015, with, is when the homes were completed, with Windmill Road addresses. In October or November of 2015, we noticed more traffic and two new mailboxes at the end of our road with Sider Lane addresses. We were never asked nor informed, but the two new homes received Sider Lane addresses and began traveling the road regularly. Since approximately that timeframe, we've been over a little bit of a lawsuit over the road, access to the road. Over the last few months, I'll kind of let Greg Tonz, who we hired, I'll kind of let him kind of go over a couple more things with the actual things that we've received, a letter in the mail, those types of things about the condemnation of the road that we seem to, to be in right now. I know this is a little bit early. I don't know, I don't believe that it's actually been on an agenda yet, to my knowledge, but it's coming. So this is just a little information for the future. That's okay, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Greg Tonz, and I'm here in representation of Mr. Wilson and his wife, Christie, and their partnership that owns the land where they live. Mr. Wilson's correct. We've been informed that staff tend to, tends to place an agenda item for the first meeting in February, I believe, to consider the condemnation of a road easement there along Sider Line, Sider Lane, and then to the south. As we understand it, that the purpose of the condemnation is to provide public access to the property owners that are to the east of the Wilsons and south of the Wilsons. And so over the next sixty days or so, I'm going to make myself available, and I know the Wilsons will, and we will probably be in contact with each of you to make sure that you understand the facts and history related to this, this land. So far, we understand that, that the, the offer we've received as to two of these properties is somewhere in the realm of fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars. There are two other property owners involved who, whose land would have to be taken. So we're guessing somewhere in the realm of thirty thousand dollars, plus legal fees, plus survey fees, plus other expenses that go along with that to, to get, to complete the condemnation. There are some issues that just initially, just to bring to your attention, as Mr. Wilson mentioned, there's a blanket oil and gas easement on all of this property. There's a large pipeline that runs right down the center of this road. There are telephone utility easements, electrical easements that are affected. The survey that has been done thus far, unless it's corrected, places the edge of the road inside of a large, a brand-new, actually, pipe fence that the Wilsons constructed, several hundred feet of pipe fence. So there are, there are improvements within this right-of-way that would have to be dealt with. There are, there's potentially an issue with jurisdiction there, because the survey stakes, this, this land is right on the boundary of Moore in Oklahoma City. The survey stakes, we, we think, are over on Oklahoma City side. So we've got issues there potentially. So, but, but for now, we think there, that the taking could create some title issues. We think that there really doesn't seem to be a public interest to be served by taking this easement. These people have been living out there, emergency vehicles have been able to travel up and down this road without any problem. The Wilsons and their neighbors aren't trying to restrict emergency vehicles from using the road, and don't anticipate doing that. On the other hand, if, if a road is condemned, as Mr. Wilson's attachment there shows, you're going to have traffic driving in close proximity to lots of oil and gas locations, which we think creates a safety concern ourselves. The, briefly, and then I'll close, the, the history of the new homeowners in the area is this. I think the, the city staff dealt with this properly in the beginning. The prior landowner, who's no longer entitled, brought this land, and this would be the, what's marked, I believe, on Peeler and Vickers on your, on your maps. The prior landowner brought that land to the city to be rezoned, and was told that in order to have it rezoned, that his access to these properties was going to need to be to the south along Windmill Road. Windmill Road feeds down into the Falls subdivision, and then out on the Thirty-Fourth. So that, that was made clear in what, we can show you the minutes of the, of the commission meeting where that happened. Subsequently, the land was sold to the Peelers and the Vickers. Their deeds reflected Windmill Road addresses. Their building permit applications, and the building permits reflected Windmill Road act, access. When my clients came away from the planning commission, or the zoning commission meeting, they clearly understood that, that access to this property in the future was to be along Windmill Road. And then, kind of what happened was for, as we've been told, public safety reasons, their addresses were changed to, from Windmill Road addresses to Sider Lane addresses. And, and having spoken with the Peelers and the Vickers in the course of this litigation, I've come to, to learn that really, the basis, a good amount of the basis for their belief that they're entitled to use it is that they have a Sider Lane address. And there's a sign that the city put up at the end of the road that says Sider Lane, so we must have a right to drive on it. That's, that's what I've been told. So part of what we're trying to do is have the city redesignate those addresses to limit the traffic, to put things back like it was, on the path that it was headed, when it was originally went through zoning, went through the lot split process, and when this, this plan was originally hatched. So that's, that's the Wilsons' focus. And again, I'm going to make my number available to you. My office number, seven oh one, sixteen hundred. Greg Tonz, T-O-N-T-Z. I'm available to answer any of your questions about this. As I said, we're about sixty days out, probably, from you having to consider any final action. I think, I believe, the Wilson's phone number is...
It should be on that list. If we put on that...
Okay, so you've got his number on the handout. So if you have any questions, let us know. And in the meantime, we'll probably be reaching out to you to give you some further details on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Next person signed up is Eddie Vickers. Randy? This is on litigation already, right? It's at the, with the city, we're in litigation on this?
Parts of it.
Parts of it?
And I guess with that letter we're talking about, Blaine, it surprised me, but that must have been the first step in the notification of the condemnation, so that proceeds from there.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Eddie Vickers, thirty-five oh one Sider Lane. Reason I came tonight was just to try to figure out and find out when this could possibly go on an agenda. And I don't know if you can tell me that or not tonight, but that's the main reason I came tonight, was to find out how it moves forward. I know it's been staked, I know it's been surveyed, and I know it has been appraised. I know that myself and I believe four other land members have all signed over our easements to you to have the road condemned, and have given it to you for that purpose. And so I didn't know if you could answer at this time or not.
Brooks, do you know?
We're working with, I understand there's still litigation. I guess there's hearings next week or this week, and we're waiting, I've been in communication with Blaine Nice, who represents the city, in the parts of the litigation that the city is party to, and so I'll visit with him again once the, I guess, this part of the litigation concludes this week.
Yes, but some new news is that we start tomorrow on the, on the hearing with the judge, and he, I believe, has considered... And he, I believe, has considered postponing this to the first of February for if it is put on the agenda. I believe Mr. Nice has mentioned that it possibly could go by the first of February. And I, I think that the judge today had mentioned that he would possibly look at moving it to February to see if council voted yes or no on the condemn.
Well, Mr. Nice has not communicated that to me, and so I can't really comment further until I've had a chance to visit with him.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know, I get to set the agenda, and this is the first I've heard of it, so, as far as putting it on the agenda for an item, so I don't know. I won't know till I get back from break. Okay. Get back to the agenda, sorry. Item B is items from the city manager or city council member.
I just wanted to say, great job to Todd and his staff for the Christmas spectacular. I think the turnout was well above what they thought it was going to be, and the fireworks show was great. Thanks to all the sponsors that helped to put that on, it was, it was a really great event.
Anybody else?
Yeah, mayor, I have a statement, I guess, or.
I was going to cut him off. Did you not notice I put you out the last?
I think most people know already. But after fifteen years on the council, this will be my, my last council meeting. It's been a pleasure, I'm proud of the work that we've done over the last fifteen years. Friendships and relationships have been just amazing. And don't want to call anybody by name, names, but I would like to say that Stan Drake has just been awesome. Made me look good all these years, and I appreciate Stan, so, anyway, as of adjournment, I think I'm done.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much, and in appreciation of that, we got you a little plaque. Because I happen to know that you were going to do this. And it says, "In appreciation of Terry Kavner for the time, interest, and expertise extended in service to the City of Moore as councilman for Ward Three, two thousand one to two thousand seventeen." And I just wanted to present you with this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now any items from the trustee or the city manager?
Thank you, mayor and council, a couple of things. Just the audit, annual audit, just so that the mayor and council know, we did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the clean opinion that you want to receive. Years passed, it was called unqualified, but they pay people to change terminology, and so now it's called an unmodified opinion, which we got, so that's what we wanted. I also like to congratulate Todd on the Christmas spectacular, I think there were eleven hundred people there, so it was, it was well attended and a great night for that. The Santa's Express and the Shop of the Cop have occurred, and they've all been, they've both been very successful events, and so we appreciate the police and fire department for their work on that and keeping that going. And want to congratulate Councilman Kavner for his years of service and appreciate working with him. He's always been there when I've needed some guidance or assistance, and appreciate it, and wish him the best. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone else Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Going to miss you. Appreciate it. And a pleasure. Item number sixteen, and I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody too before I go. Item number sixteen is adjourned.
So who? Second.
All right, thank you very much.
I think I have to take the number.
Call for it, yeah, call for it.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham? Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, for adjourned, thank you for coming.